Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. If you can all silence your mobile devices, I would greatly appreciate it. Today is October 7th, 2025. There's a quorum present. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I don't think they will be.
Oh, sorry. One more thing to click. There you go.
Okay. Does Brian want me to start over?
Probably does.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is October 7th, 2025. There's a quorum present. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Bringing us to item number two, which is to convene us the Story County Board of County Commissioners. Bringing us to item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can all stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. On to item number four is public comment. Public comment is welcomed at the beginning and end of each meeting. These comments should be limited to matters not already on today's calendar agenda. Public comment is again welcomed after each item on the agenda, and those comments should be limited to the agenda's topic. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per individual. With that said, is there any public comment in the courtroom? All right, not seeing any. Going to move right along to item number five, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the agenda for the October 7th, 2025 meeting. County Manager Osborne, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just one, Chair.
Okay.
We would like to continue number 35 to the October 21 county commission meeting here at the courthouse and on Zoom that deals with a donation item. And before you motion on that, let me just double check a date on that. It is the 21st. That would be the date.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about today's agenda?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thanks.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding the items on the agenda today? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I move to approve today's agenda with the noted continuance of item number 35 to our October 21st meeting here at the courthouse.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number six, a discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes from the August 19th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments on those minutes?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
How about public comment? All right, not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I move to approve the minutes from our August 19th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seven, this is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes from the September 2, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments about those minutes?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
Good, thanks.
How about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve, uh, other mi- uh, sorry. I move to approve the minutes from our September 2nd, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eight, this is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 25-801, recognizing and commending a Story County employee who has served 10 years of service to the county. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Lopez for the record. I'm pleased to present the proposed resolution recognizing and commending a dedicated Story County employee for 10 years of service. This resolution honors not only her commitment and professionalism, but also the significant contributions she's made over a decade in service to the citizens, businesses, and stakeholders of Story County. On behalf of the county, we extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to her unwavering dedication and the positive impact she has had on our community. This appreciation award goes to Nettie Strong.
Or do they present first? Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, just thank you for your dedication to the county.
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, thanks, Nettie.
Yep. Appreciate you very much, Nettie. Uh, is there any public comment regarding this item? All right, not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve Resolution Number 25-801, recognizing and commending a Story County employee who has served 10 years of service to the county, specifically Nettie Strong.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments about today's consent agenda?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thanks.
All right, how about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I move to approve today's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number 10, this is discussion only, no action, no public comment will be taken. These are committee and staff reports. Things off with the sheriff today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Cullen for the record. I have a few things I just wanted to mention regarding some recent activities, street vibrations specifically of that weekend. Let's see, got a bunch of notes here and some of the numbers associated with that weekend. Starting off the weekend on Friday, September 26th, it was a pretty interesting morning. At 11:32 in the morning, we had, a call came in for harassment threats, specifically a bomb threat out there at Superloop. Deputies responded to that situation at 11:32, right at the same time. That was at one Superloop. Then at 3:60 East Sydney, we had another one, which was actually shooting was going on at that location. Deputies then split off from the first one and responded to that one. Shortly after that, at 12:25 that afternoon, we had another shots fired call at Wild Horse Canyon, Mustang Ranch specifically, to which we responded outside agencies to assist with that call. My point on that is that in a very short time period, we were stressed with calls for service on a very stressful weekend with street vibrations. Just try to give you guys an idea of what was going on. The first call for service, we started evacuating approximately 1,000 employees, according to the company out there, and getting them to safety. The good news with that, with these bomb threats that we were getting, is that we did actually bring somebody into custody the week after for doing that. And that's an interesting story, if you'd like to talk about it. I'll be more than happy to tell that to you later on. So that was something that happened on the 26th. Also, on the 26th of September, we had approximately 3,965 vehicles coming in and out of Virginia City for street vibrations. The following day, on the 27th, we had almost 8,000, 7,930 vehicles coming in and out for street vibrations. On that day, I had some notes here, but we had three crashes. I'm proud to report and happy to report, we had no fatalities, only minor injuries. Two crashes at the north end of town, and then another crash at the south near the railroad tracks in Gold Hill that involved two motorcyclists. But we did have a lot of support up here from outside agencies and our own officers using joining forces, grant funds to pay for those overtime positions. And I'm proud to say again that we did keep the traffic incidents to a minimum and there were no fatalities for street vibrations in Story County. Another thing I wanted to clarify, we reported to social media that we had issued somewhere upwards of 500 and something citations for the month of September with 800 traffic stops. That number was incorrect. The actual number of citations issued for September was 157, with 801 actual traffic stops, leaving approximately 644 warnings on traffic stops, which goes on with the educational reinforcement ideas of the sheriff's office. And that's pretty much it as far as street vibrations goes. It was a pretty active weekend. We did have a lot of agencies up here assisting, and we had the calls out there at USA Parkway, but overall, it turned out pretty good for the sheriff's office, and I'm pretty excited about how it turned out with the traffic plan, working with VCTC and the event promoter and all the motorcyclists. Oh, the last thing on that is Sunday morning of street vibrations, we went out and started picking up garbage right away, and we had the kids from the school, their group, picking up garbage and some citizens and stuff, and that was pretty nice. And I think overall, the attendees of the event, they police themselves pretty well with that littering. We do get that, you know, regardless, but it wasn't too bad, so I'm here to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Great. Appreciate the update, Sheriff. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
Just great news, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Uh, just, just one on those, those fairly serious incidents on Friday. Are those ongoing incidents, or did they turn out to not, to just be scares?
Um, at this point, yeah, we think it is. I mean, there's still an investigation that's a little bit ongoing. We did bring somebody into custody, like I said, and we'll see how that plays out. But as of that arrest, we haven't had any more of those threats.
Great, thank you.
All right. Again, appreciate you and your team out there keeping us safe. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Moving right along to the Fire Protection District.
Good morning. Bob Reiser, Fire Chief for the record. Our world is never uneventful, just as, as the sheriffs, but we've had some good things recently that I wanted to highlight. This past weekend, we had the outhouse races up here in Virginia City, and for the first time, the Fire District, first time in a long time, the Fire District participated. That was a good hit. I won't relay the name of our, our particular device, but first time in, and they, they made it to fourth place, so just off the podium, so that was pretty exciting. Lots of good community feedback from that as well. Then subsequently, on Saturday night, we also had a pretty significant, over-the-edge technical rope rescue from a motor vehicle accident. They were able to utilize a skill set that we specifically brought in last year, which is a rapid extrication module, which is over the edge in a fairly intense environment, and go down about 250 feet, package a patient, and bring her back up the side of the mountain to where we could transfer her to a helicopter to get her to the hospital. And that ran as smoothly as it, it could, given the gravity of the situation. Then the last significant thing is, starting yesterday morning, we have two cadets at the Capital City Regional Fire Academy, where they are participating in a group of, there's only 10 cadets in this one, it's a small academy, but four separate agencies, they will be there for the next 16 weeks, working through the holidays, give or take the holidays off. Big bonus of that is we're working to integrate better with our mutual aid partners. So when we show up on scenes, we can be much more effective, much more efficient. We learn to expect what each other is going to do, and operating off the same SOGs and practices, which is a big deal. So that's adding to the three that we sent through that just hit their anniversary this past month, and that's a process that we plan to continue moving forward.
All right. That's the end of your update?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thanks.
All right, appreciate the update, Chief. Moving right along to Public Works. How about Operations and Projects Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Northon, Project Manager. Item one, Lockwood Senior Center, project has reached completion from a contract scope perspective. Final payment will be next month. I do have some items not in contract that we are working through, like the address letters on the front of the building, mailbox, permanent fence on the park side, cylinders and locks, and that sort of thing. I'll be advising the board as I have costs on those things. Staff have occupied the building, and so far, no reports of any issues. Item two, Mark Twain Vehicle Storage Building. Contract has been reviewed, should be signed this week. We're currently working through plan review, and following that, we'll schedule a preconstruction conference to determine schedule, hours of operation, materials, storage, and site access and that. Item three is fuel tanks replacement at the Public Works facilities nearing about 40%. The new tanks have been delivered and placed. Crews will be pouring the concrete fueling pad this week. Next week, they'll be working on the plumbing and setting the pumps, and then the electricians will integrate the pumps with the existing Fuel Master system there. And item four is, I'm still working on the bid documents for the fairgrounds and the B Street Rock Reed wall repair projects. We hope to have those out to bid soon. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments for Mike?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
All right, appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you.
How about Project Manager Chris?
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Trotta, Operations and Construction for the record. We have some project updates for you. Today, we have a task order for board approval for the preconstruction efforts for the replacement of the wastewater piping from Toll Road to the new wastewater treatment plant. So that will be on the full board approval today. Excuse me. Separate from that, we are securing the easements for the new water main from Highway 580, runs across Washoe Valley up to the top of the siphon at the top of Virginia Hills. Separate from that project, we are finalizing the contracts for the refurbishment and ongoing maintenance for all seven of our water storage tanks in our water system. Very proud of that, of that program. On the building side, we are preparing a bid solicitation for the refurbishment of the entry doors at Piper Opera House, as well as five windows on the south side of the building. And that will go out in the next couple of weeks. And finally, we're on track to receive the parts and pieces for the courthouse fence project that will begin in the spring. And with that, I would take any questions.
Thank you for the update, Chris. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
All right, appreciate it. All good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. How about our Business Development Director?
Good morning, Laura Mather for the record. This morning, you will be pleased to know that I am here to talk about our ZIP code. So at the August 5th Commissioners' meeting, this board directed staff to proceed with getting letters of support from surrounding counties to move forward with expanding our 89437 ZIP code to push out the Sparks 89434 ZIP code. So I started that process when Commissioner Mitchell, myself, and Sarah were in Washington, DC. We met with Congressman Amade's office, gave him a heads up, because he's been absolutely instrumental in the whole process for years of dealing with the ZIP codes. So last week, I was notified by one of his staff that they reached out to the post, to the post office to try to give them a heads up, figure out what the process is, and the response from the post office was, since Story County has already filed a ZIP code boundary review, they would have to wait 10 years to file another review to expand the existing 89437 ZIP code. Having said that, though, the formal letter that we received when that ZIP code was initially done was in 2018. So I replied back to the Congressman's office to confirm that this just means that in 2028 we can go ahead and start that process and get it going again. So with that, and obviously, this will be future discussion, when we, when we get to that point and we really start moving forward with this, I think the county needs to think about our ZIP codes throughout the entire county. Because if we are only allowed to do this every 10 years, we want to have it all, all, all at once, all together, all the ZIP codes, identify everything that we want to fix and adjust so that we can do it and not have to wait another 10 years for any of the other adjustments that we want to do. So with that, though, my focus is encouraging the businesses that are, are in the 89437 ZIP code to actually use that. So I created a list of 173 companies that are located within those boundaries. I researched every single one of the 173 companies to try to figure out who is using the correct ZIP code and who is not using the correct ZIP code. So I did that by going to websites, businesses that I've had email interaction with, their, their signature box, if they have their address, social media, what they put on social media. So out of the 173 companies, 74 of them I could not verify, meaning they have a corporate office that's somewhere else, that's where all of their mail goes to. Maybe they have a map that says the company's in Reno or McCarran or in Northern Nevada or Nevada, but doesn't specifically say what their ZIP code is that they're using. So that was 74 of the companies, or 42%. Out of the other companies, a total of 50 companies, or 28, almost 29% are using the correct ZIP code. So of those, 14 are using McCarran 89437. 35 are using Sparks 89437, which the post office is very adamant, when it comes to mail, they can use either Sparks or McCarran, as long as they use the 89437. And then one company uses McCarran Reno 89437. Out of the others that I could verify, 37 are using the 89434 ZIP code. 31 are using 89434 but have McCarran correct, so I'm not sure how they got McCarran correct, but not the ZIP code correct. 13 are using 89434 Sparks, two are using 89434 McCarran Reno, and one's using 89434 Reno. And interestingly, one's using Sparks with a ZIP code that's not even related to anything. So now that I know exactly who is using the right ZIP code, I'm going to leave them alone. The companies that are not using the right ZIP code, I'm going to be reaching out to them individually and provide the resolution that this board passed recently, the USPS map, all that good stuff. So I figure over the next two years before, until we can actually make that, that ZIP code expansion, you know, or whatever it is that the board chooses to, to work on, I'll get these companies to use the correct ZIP code. So that's the end of my report.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Laura. Commissioner Gilman?
Yeah, I have questions. If they use the 89437, but they use Sparks and not McCarran, do we still get the tax benefit of the 89437?
It's my understanding that we do, because that's what it's based off of, is that, is that ZIP code. Ideally, what my goal is when I reach out to these companies is to let them know when they're filing anything, use McCarran and the correct ZIP code. I understand when UPS gets lost and when they're, when it's McCarran or Sparks, so UPS shipments or whatever, whatever company they use to get shipments in or their mail, they're welcome to use Sparks, but if they would please, please use McCarran for everything else.
So I think the issue with that, and I've had this problem recently, even at the Nevada Taxation Department, when I would go there to do something and I tried to use McCarran 89437, they wouldn't recognize McCarran, they would only recognize Spark, but they would let me use the 89437. So there's some issues there as well, and some of these companies might not be able to use that, depending on other companies' computer systems on what they'll accept as a, as an address. So I do know that issue is out there.
Agreed, agreed. And one of the things that Congressman Amade's office, one of the things they did, that they did was reach out to the DMV and the Department of Taxation, and they guaranteed his office that if people would just use the right ZIP code, they'll make sure we get, you know, the appropriate taxes and that the companies or the citizens are charged the appropriate amounts.
Great.
Yeah. Who knew it would be this complicated?
Thank you, Commissioner Gilman. Vice Chairman, you have anything?
Uh, great work, Laura. I know it's complicated. I was thinking, as, you know, as you proceed with this, maybe we work with our internal departments and elected officials to set some standards around what we accept on annual reporting or forms, where if, if there are companies that are slow to adopt, maybe not right away, but then we have a policy where we won't accept a business license renewal or something like that if it doesn't have the proper form on it. I think maybe that, that gets a little more, a little more pressure behind getting it corrected.
I 100% agree, and I know community development already does that. They will fix it if somebody applies with the wrong information, but yeah, that would be great. I mean, if we can get all of us on the same page, that will really help getting everybody else on the same page as well.
Any other questions? All right. My question's pretty simple. Do they get mail out there, like mail delivery?
Yes, although that is a problem too, but yes.
Okay, USPS goes out there?
Yes.
Interesting. All right, well, thank you for the update. Thanks for working on that ZIP code. Moving right along to the Grants Manager.
Sarah starts for the record, so I just have a quick update today. The Nevada State Historic Preservation Office, so SHIPO, completed the Certified Local Government, or CLG, quadrennial review for Story County, and that covered fiscal years 2022 through 2025. The Story, Story County remains in full compliance with state and federal CLG requirements. The Comstock Historic District has held regular meetings, submitted all the required reports on time, and then on the county side, we have completed two major projects, the Historic Courthouse Walkway and Entrance Preservation Project, and that Historic District Survey Phase Two Project. SHIPO commended the county for its preservation planning, public outreach, and ongoing participation and training. The next review will cover FY 2026 through FY 2029. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you for that, Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, anything for Sarah?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Good, thanks.
All right, appreciate the report. How about our Admin Officer?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Wilson, Director of Emergency Management for the record. Quite a list. I'll try and go quick. Tomorrow is our LPSI Local Emergency Planning Committee. That's at 10:00 AM. Out at the Tri-Center, we also provide a Zoom link on all of our postings. We encourage people to attend this one. Unfortunately, NDOT isn't going to be able to make it to talk about the I-80 project. However, they did send their slides to Laura, and she's going to present that information at the meeting for us. As we discussed back in July, the company that was building our Mobile EOC went out of business, and we were kind of dead in the water. Every other company was three to four times higher on the quote. We found an even better option, they're right here in Carson. We just happened to drive by their yard one day and saw a trailer that looked like what we would request. So they are building out a custom build for us right now, and it looks like it may even come under the budget of Colorado, and it's supporting a local company. So we're very excited to hopefully have more information on that later this week. Thank you to the County Manager's Office. A long goal of mine for EM was to be able to support multiple complex incidents. Fire District very generously gave us a Yukon to try and expand that. Unfortunately, just didn't meet the capabilities of our county and what EM is required to do out here for hauling equipment and such. So the County Manager repurposed a pickup over to our office, so we were able to expand that capability and not have any cost incurred to the county, which is amazing. We've been working very closely with the School District still, reviewing plans, expanding communication. We helped them acquire some trauma stop-the-bleed kits and have two more classes to go, and then 100% of their staff will be trained up on that trauma first aid, which is the tourniqueting and those sort of lifesaving measures. We went out with IT and the new side-by-side, that IT and our emergency management chair, and we did some Starlink satellite uplink testing out at the Petroglyph site to try and protect those, as well as test our emergency communications, and it performed way better than we anticipated. So we're very excited to have that resource rolled out. Across the quad, across the quad counties, we have gotten a new EOC software. It's at no cost to any of the counties. This was paid for through a grant on public health preparednesses side. With the hack at the state, we lost access to the state's provided EOC software, which is how we coordinate both locally and statewide on emergencies and disasters with the hack. With the hack, that was completely lost, and the state decided they weren't going to rebuild that capability. And fortunately, Quad Public Health came to our rescue, and they have gotten us this even better software that we'll be able to use way more integrated across the quads. So we're in the process of rolling that out. It is a pretty complex system, so it is going to be time-consuming, but we hope to have it up by December. This morning, we finalized the details for the Lockwood evacuation exercise. That's going to be December 13th at 8:00 AM, and we will begin on the 12th with some precursor messaging, and then on the 13th at 8:00 AM, we'll request the residents evacuate to the new senior center. We'll have a little resource area for them, and then the county and partners will do our tabletop exercise on our actions during a flood in Lockwood that same timeframe. There's going to be a lot more information coming out from Julia on social media. We'll also have a town hall being released shortly to provide more information to the residents on that. And along those same lines, for the next two years, we have finalized all the plans for each community every quarter to have some sort of community exercise, whether it's an actual participate and actually evacuate your residents like we did in the Highlands and soon in Lockwood, or if it's just going to be a tabletop or more of a discussion town hall-based sort of event. We have two years worth of plans. Every community is going to get an evacuation or some sort of exercise for their community. And I think I'm finally done.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman? All right. Appreciate all the work out there, man. Moving on to the BCTC.
Todd Tuttle, Director of Tourism, for the record. I want to start off with a great heartfelt welcome, or thank you, to Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, and Public Works. We have seen tremendous success in the events that have been up here. I want to highly praise street vibrations that we try to contain and keep into a fairly effective event that goes on, and reemphasize zero fatalities. Just wonderful work by these people that really make these things happen and behind the scenes in its success. We're coming off the strongest camel races that we've had ever in its existence after sixty-six years. We just came off from the best-attended outhouse races. We brought up bleachers to be able to provide a little more seating and observation area that worked out extremely well. We got a lot of public comment about having that set up, and it's something we'd like to be able to see advanced a little bit further. We've received more publicity regarding these events than we've ever seen before. We've never had live shots or live television broadcasts associated with the outhouse races, and they were up in a couple of events on both Friday and on Sunday, so some great experiences with it. We've also had the Nevada Film Day that was up here, sponsored down at the Virginia and Truckee Railroad. Tremendous attendance, a national recognition for Virginia City and what can be done in the film industry and the world that goes on up here. So some really strong events have brought Virginia City and Story County to the forefront of the nation, and we're pretty excited about that. Coming up, as far as events, this Friday, on the 10th, is the Gold Rush Race. It goes from Virginia City to Tonopah. With that is all categories and classes of off-road vehicles, all the way from motorcycles up to the Baja 500 off-road vehicles. They were doing their tech inspection on C Street on that Friday. So C Street from Sutton to Union will be closed in order to bring the vehicles up to be able to be inspected. Over the last three years, we've held this event. That's been a big draw for people to come up and see these vehicles up close and how they go through that tech inspection for it. Then the race begins on Friday or Saturday morning on the way down to Tonopah. On Saturday also is the return of Red Run. This is Red Run Seven. It's been away from Virginia City for seven years and has been the most requested event that we've received in my office over the last three years. We're excited to bring it back, and we've already sold out all of the zombie entries and the runner entries opportunities. A little bit behind it, they cover all of Virginia City. It's kind of an escape room slash Spartan Race slash challenge with zombies to be able to get through the history of Virginia City, seek particular locations and spots. In the previous, we've identified a few hiccups that need to be straightened up, and we think we've gotten those cleared through. So we're anticipating a very smooth event to go on. And again, the excitement, we just came off from some television interviews throughout this morning in relationship to those events that are coming up. The next is the October, of course, with all the things going on during the month of October, between the various haunted locations, whether it's the Washoe Club, the Mackey Mansion, out at the Fourth Ward School. We get tremendous recognition throughout, most of the media, all throughout the area, so we're excited about that. Couple of key points in it. The Costume Parade will be on Friday, the 31st. Trick-or-treating on C Street will immediately follow. The State Hood Ball will be at Piper's Opera House on November 1st. That's also the Celebration of Nevada Day, so the Nevada Parade will be in Carson City, and then, of course, the State Hood Ball here at Piper's Opera House. And then, I'll be the first to say it, coming up, Christmas on the Comstock, already knocking on our doors, so get prepared for that. There will be, once again, a decorating contest, and we expect for a lot to have happen to that. A few other events we need to mention is Mark Twain Days. That'll be the 17th through the 19th. The Twain Train will be coming into Virginia City on Friday afternoon at 3:30, and then they'll be staying until about 5:30. So it's a little bit different than our regular long-line run-ins on Saturday and Sunday. This one's really quite a special train and is always sold out, so just to be aware that there'll be quite a bit of a crowd up until 5:30. Another thing to recognize, 150 years ago, on October 26th was the Great Fire. It would devastate the town, cost ten to twelve million dollars, but it gave us the opportunity to rebuild, and I think it's one of the key points that says what Virginia City and Story County is all about in our resilience to take things from as low as we can go to the highest that we can be. It's a great recognition for all that went on to be able to rebuild what we've got today. We've got the ABA National Convention that's going to be handled in Reno. That is international and national group and bus groups that come into the area. We're excited to highlight Virginia City. We have a tour coming up here on the 10th that was immediately sold out, so we know there's a great interest for them to be coming through. We're also involved with the Travel Nevada Adventure Center, which will be in Carson City. They'll have the groundbreaking for that or the ribbon company for that next week. And also the Dust and Wonder Trail, which is the grant program that unifies Carson Valley, Carson City, and Virginia City in an arts and architectural and cultural tour that then puts people together to be able to understand those other facets of what our community has to offer. So it's a big report. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Todd. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments for Todd?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Todd, my only comment is I was in a large home improvement store yesterday with my son, and the Christmas decorations are up there too, so you're forgiven for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Todd. All right, how about the Controller's Office?
Good morning, Governor. Good morning. You don't have nothing at the time, do you?
All right, thanks, Jennifer. How about the Assessor's Office?
I didn't do well this morning.
All right.
Oh, sure, I'll go first. It's Drew McPherson, county recorder. I have Jana Seddon with me, Story County Assessor. So we'd like to provide an update regarding changes to the Declaration of Value, or the DOV form. This form is submitted with any document that comes in for recording, such as a deed, any document basically that transfers title, and it's used to, with the collection and reporting of real property transfer tax. So during the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session, Assembly Bill 377 was passed, which updates the Declaration of Value to include an existing assessor's office function, which is the reporting of owner occupancy for the purpose of determining property tax abatements. The new form was approved yesterday by the Nevada Tax Commission, and as part of that approval, a rollout timeline was established. So there will be a grace period through December 31st, 2025, wherein recorders will accept both versions of the Declaration of Value form, but starting January 1st, 2026, we will have to kind of hold the line and only collect the new form with any deed or title transferring document. So it gives us some time, this grace period, to inform our industry partners like title companies, law firms, document preparation services. And this form is available on the Story County Recorder's website, and will be available as well through the Department of Taxation's website sometime this week. So Jana can speak more to what this new section of the form actually does. That's all yours.
Hi, Jana Seddon, for the record, Story County Assessor. This has been kind of, this was a situation that not all assessors agree with. The property tax cap form is what establishes whether you have a 3% tax cap or an 8% tax cap for residential properties, okay? A 3% means it is your primary residence. It is, you can only get that one 3% in the state of Nevada, one residence. There are other caveats that they're not, that's not going to be, that you cannot choose on the Deck of Value form. Hence, if it's a rental, if it is a family occupied, because there are different things that you could still qualify for that 3%. So a little background, this is a very tedious process. In the larger counties, it is very expensive, like if you'd have to send out a mailer every single year to every single improved property that has a house on it. The mailing is expensive, but it is the processing of these forms. When you have as many, you know, residents that these larger counties has, it just was not cost-effective. So they basically sent them out once, and it stayed that way. If there was a change, or if they moved, or it became a rental property, it became something else, you never knew. It just stayed the same. And so one of the legislatures, actually the sponsor of this bill, who is a real estate agent that had several different houses, she found out that her primary residence had been capped at 8% for like four years. In the NRS, it states that if you miss turning in your tax cap form by the 30th, or actually, I think there's a different date, and they have a form here, but that really doesn't matter, you have until June 30th, you have a whole year to turn that in and get it fixed, get a correction done. However, she was very upset that Clark County was not sending yearly forms to do this. So it came about that, hey, Washoe and Clark decided, let's put these on the Deck of Values, and instead of it now being an assessor function, now they've included title companies and recorders. So that's how they are trying to keep their records updated as much as possible. Many other counties that send these out yearly or are going to continue to send these out yearly, because many things happen. If you buy a house in, say, the end of July, and you say, no, this is not my primary residence because you haven't actually moved to Nevada yet, if you don't send out another property tax cap form, is that person going to remember to come in and do that? Not necessarily. Lots of things change after you buy a house. So we need to know that I will still be, my office will still be sending out these property tax cap forms at the end of May, 1st of June, and they will still need to be returned, okay? That form, when you get it in the mail, will supersede anything that you have previously done. So in the future, I would love to have a conversation about a possible ordinance, because NAC 361 states, the county assessor shall, if the county assessor determines it to be necessary, verify whether the property is eligible for a primary residential abatement. Now, that's a lot to put on an assessor when you have a lot of different people. So the way that the majority of the assessors do it, we send the form out to determine whether or not that is going to be eligible for a primary residential abatement. That's how we do this, okay? So there's a lot of corrections we have to do every year. A lot of people forget this. It is not a perfect world. I have corrections still sitting on my desk. Again, this can be done for a whole year. So in the future, I would love to have a discussion about some sort of ordinance that we could maybe put into place that would keep, that backs me up to maybe not have to send these out every year. Does that make sense? I'm not sure if that makes sense to everyone, but does anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Gilman, questions?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thank you.
Okay. Done with your report?
Yes.
Awesome. We appreciate it. Very informative. Thank you. How about the Planning Department?
I have nothing today.
Okay. IT Department?
Good morning, Commissioners. James Dean, IT Director. A couple of updates. We have our first 10 gigabit fiber link between the Divide Building and Adam Wilson's Emergency Management Building. We have decommissioned, or we'll decommission, the last DSL line in the county, so that's the end of an era there. It's kind of interesting, when I first got here, DSL was the new hot thing, and basically that's the last DSL line in the county, so we'll be shutting that off. We have the emergency management on the county backbone. That'll be expanding out throughout all of town as NNC and Comstock. Our Churchill County Communications rolls out the fiber, so pretty excited about that. Like Adam said, we took Starlink out to the petroglyphs. There's little to no cell service out there, certainly not enough to run a camera system, so per Commissioner Mitchell's directive, we're going to put a Starlink solar system out there that'll protect the petroglyphs with some cameras. It's a pretty wide area to cover, so we're probably going to ask for a second site next year, but I think we're going to be able to get the first site set up and operational with the budget item that we have this year, and then we can look to expand. But what a treasure out there. We did some drone flights. It's just an amazing area, so we've got that documented, and look forward to getting that project complete probably by the end of fiscal year. I don't know if we're going to beat the snow this year, but that's all I got.
Great, great update, James. Commissioner Gilman, questions?
Thank you.
Vice Chairman? All right. Thanks again, James. Great news. How about Human Resources? Thanks, Brandy. Community Development?
Joseph Starnes, for the record. Just want to give you a little update of what's going on in our office. September was another strong month. We're in our busy season for community development. I want to always take a moment to acknowledge the dedication and professionalism of our team. Our continued success is a direct result of their daily commitment. Some of the highlights for September in our statistics, strong progress with code enforcement abatements, excellent performance across plan review, permitting processing, inspection scheduling, and special inspection review and documentation. And here's the cool one. We completed a record-breaking, I know I always say that because we keep breaking records. We did 220 inspections in the month of September, and that's an outstanding achievement given our extended commutes and our complexity of our projects. It's pretty cool. So to put that in perspective, our inspectors covered about 25 million square feet of structure last month, so that was pretty cool. And we closed out 60 permits, reflecting both project completions and effective cleanup of outstanding items. We're trying to clean up some of the old passed permits. So looking ahead, obviously, October, we're still in the fall, busy season, everybody's trying to push before the snow comes, so our numbers are expected to remain high. And I don't, anymore, I don't expect too much of a seasonal slowdown between the months of November and February. We're pretty much, you know, with the industrial park, we're busy all the time, so that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for the update, Joe. It's great news out there, man. Your team is definitely moving and shaking. Commissioner Gilman?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Good, thanks.
Appreciate it. How about our PR officer?
Julia Moreno-Fritz, Public Relations Officer, for the record. I have a brief update to share with you this morning. I have a brief update to share with you this morning, and this is from the school district, but Grady Armstrong, a fourth grader at Hugh Gallagher Elementary, won the 2025 U.S. Capitol Christmas Tree Essay Contest out of 250 entries. This was a statewide competition. Grady will travel with his family to Washington DC in December to help light the tree. His essay highlights Nevada's public lands and natural beauty, and he will also be honored at the Story County School District Board Meeting this Wednesday, October 8th, at 5:30 PM at the high school. I will be writing a story about him in the Comstock Chronicle, and if any of the Commissioners would like to read his essay, I have it, it's really beautiful, and I'd be happy to send it to you. And additionally, we have Principal Hess here to answer any questions if you have any. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Hi, Sonia Hess, Story County Principal, Hillside Elementary School and Gallagher Elementary School. And first of all, I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Carmona, for sending this on to our superintendent, who sent it on to us, and we're super excited to have a Story County student win this for the whole state of Nevada.
Awesome. Thank you both for the update. Yeah, I'll just jump in. Commissioner Mitchell and I were able to make it. The presentation surprised me in class. It was pretty exciting. Young kid, great essay, I got to read it. And I think it's a great experience for the whole family. His grandma is my neighbor, but that had nothing to do with him winning. That's just a fluke. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I was particularly impressed with the essay as well. I got two ten of private reading of it, so. Wasn't private, he read it for everyone, and it was really impressive. I can see why he won. Thank the Lieutenant Governor for making a big deal about something that is a big deal, right?
Yep, absolutely. No, it's a great honor for Story County, so hopefully make the school board meeting 5:30. See you guys. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
How about Lee Sterrett?
Lee Sterrett for the record. Last month, the Board of the Carson City, I'm sorry, Carson Water Subconservatory District made a field trip to Marlette Lake Dam Reconstruction Project. The foundation of the original 26-foot rock and earth dam was laid in 1873 by a logging company. In 1876, it was raised 37 feet to enable the Virginia City and Gold Hill Company to draw water, and later it was increased to 49 feet high, 45 feet high, excuse me. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers recently rated this structure as a high hazard dam. FEMA awarded $10 million grant in the state of Nevada, which is $11 million to replace the dam. Luminescent and assassins were awarded the engineering contract, and Granite is doing the construction. Environmental constraints require that all work is completed between May and October. In preparation for the construction, Marlette Lake was drained to a level of 20 feet, allowing construction to begin in May of this year. The Aqua Dam Company installed a cover dam in June, which allowed water between the dams to be pumped out. The old dam and underground spillway pipes were removed, the area excavated down to bedrock. The new spillway pipe and structure was constructed, and the new earthquake dam construction started. The water side of the earthquake dam was nearing completion at the time of our visit. It was about six feet short of being fully, the full height. The backside of the buttress of the dam was under construction. The schedule is to have the new dam ready to start holding water this October, and the cover dam removed by November. Under normal conditions, it will take a late six to seven years to return to the 45-foot level depth. Work is scheduled to resume in May of next year, and the project completed by that October. A slide presentation of photos and additional information is on the county website at Home, Government, Departments, Planning Projects and Updates, Marlette Lake Dam Reconstruction. Also, Aqua Dam made four interesting YouTube videos of the Custer Dam installation, which can be found on YouTube at Marlette Lake, Nevada 2002-5, Part 1 of 4. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Lee. Anybody have any questions for Lee?
None, thank you.
Appreciate it. How about the DA's office?
Good morning, how are you doing on the update today?
All right, thank you, Brian. How about the County Manager's Office? All right.
Good morning, Austin Osmond for the record. Just to give you a couple of updates. One, on USA Parkway and the whole traffic situation, we are engaged with NDOT, I would say daily, if not every other day, have been for the last month or so, on the progress of getting a couple of traffic signals installed on USA Parkway to facilitate traffic left turns northbound, and trying to get people out of the Waltham area and Patrick, or the Peru area over to that. My understanding is the Sydney, USA Parkway traffic signal is either going up now, or it will be going up within days. It is ready, farts have been ordered, and Switch and Gray Construction have been heavily involved in that project, working with NDOT. NDOT and the county and our team are talking about Denmark traffic signal and the Waltham to USA Parkway intersections. Both of them have potential, both of them have some challenges. The Denmark has the most challenges, so they're probably going to look at more of a Waltham traffic signal. We're working with an adjacent property owner to get some right of way, or like an access permission to put two trailers on there that facilitate the temporary traffic signals. We believe that that thing is moving pretty good so far, everyone's cooperative, and we should have two of these things operating very soon. NDOT is also looking at with us, USA Parkway on the I-80, they're looking at the Patrick interchanges to look at some of the traffic flows and some of the good and bad that we're seeing in those areas. Overall, our team and I have observed, and NDOT has as well, that the Patrick interchange is functioning. It's slow and go, it's moving along, but it is functioning, and Jason Wisberky from Public Works installed some stop signs before that period at the Mars Calcan area that essentially are metering traffic into that interchange and helping out. There's the potential for some, at USA Parkway on ramp going westbound to Reno, to potentially put some traffic metering devices on there. There's some reasons why that might work, and there's some reasons it may not work. NDOT and their team are looking at it. I will say the two people we're working with right now, Principal at NDOT, they're the most amazing NDOT employees I've ever experienced in my life. They are very involved in this, very engaged, it's daily conversations. They call me a lot of times and say, hey, we're out in the field, and this power pole, can you tell us if it's in or out of the right of way? And our planning department and our team get together and get them maps and get them right of ways and whatever they need. They pull them up on their iPads out in the field, and then we talk about it. It's that real type of engagement. So, so far, so good on that. Also want to thank the Sheriff's Office and others on our team for, whether it's traffic enforcement and otherwise, trying to keep things moving, you know, as smoothly out there as possible. This Board gave direction to me at the last meeting to engage with NDOT, to create a contract for the installation of these traffic signals, and for Story County to pay for half of the costs. That contract has been done and finished and signed. I'll bring it to the next Board meeting for you to take a look at. It's roughly $270,000 up to for us to pay for half of the signals, about half a million dollars for two of them. We don't actually expect that the cost will get near that number, but if it did, we would be prepared to go ahead and take action and facilitate and work with NDOT to get those installed. So, that's it on the traffic signal front. I just want to also let you know that Commissioner Mitchell, Grants Manager Sarah Sturts and I went to the Lyon County Commissioners' meeting last Thursday and talked to them about the Comstock Historic District Transfer Project that we're working on and potentially having an interlocal agreement with Lyon and Story County. The Board had some very good questions, and, but they did go ahead and took action to direct our staff to work with us and coordinate a plan and cooperate, and for us to work with them on some challenges and questions they had on, you know, how this would work multi-jurisdictionally. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you, Austin.
Vice Chairman?
No, thanks.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
How about the Clerk Treasurer's Office?
Jim Hindle, County Clerk and Treasurer. I'll try and be quick on this, since this seems to be taking most of the day. First of all, we, as you noticed down in the slammer, we've kind of been taking that over for the last week, and through this week, we're completing our Mach 5 of the new voter registration election management system. This will be the fifth test election we have gone through this year, and that will continue. We are testing and finalizing the integration of all 17 counties in the system, making sure that it all works properly. And one of the big additions in this Mach is that we will be running reporting to make sure that we can get the data out for election night reporting that we've put in. And all is working, the challenge is to break it, and that's what we're doing. We're also able to use the procedures to go through our new equipment and make sure we're anticipating how we run our poll centers, and I want to thank our poll center leaders. They've been participating in these Mach's, and they're there, and so they're really doing a great job, and that'll help in our poll worker training as we do that in next year. The other activity we have going on, as everybody knows, is we have a big case going through District Court. We called 225 jurors for that civil case, and we got about a third of those that were eligible to sit for the trial, sit for selection. I don't want to jinx anything, but hopefully we're going to get the formal notice that that case is settled, and it will not actually go to jury trial. But, I just wanted again to highlight the number of our residents that get called for any one trial like this in order to go through and get a selection for people that would go through. And so, hopefully we don't have too many, because 225, 250 had a shot, we could exhaust ourselves pretty quickly. The other thing that was due yesterday were the second installment of property taxes. So, people should be, if they haven't paid those property taxes yet, they have through the balance of the week to pay them without penalty, so please get those in. But we've had a steady stream of activity and, and good remittance from people for property taxes, which is good for the county. And lastly, maybe not on a lighter note, but it sounds lighter. Two weeks ago, the US Mint ran its last run of pennies. So, pennies are going to be in short supply sometime in the next year or two. They don't anticipate it happening soon, but we, as a county, have been trying to, with the Comptroller's Office, to think through what we need to do to establish procedures. If indeed pennies start running out, and we have to have some implication of how to maintain remittances and change for those public-facing departments that we have that take cash, we'll have to think about what we need to, to come back to you on how we may manage those procedures. But, I guess pennies are going to heaven.
All right. Thank you for the update, Jim. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm just wondering if it's time to start a Story County Strategic Penny Stockpile.
There you go. Nothing else?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the update, Jim. Is there anybody that has to give an update that I forgot to call on today? All right, thank you. That was an extremely informative staff report collection. We're going to move right along to item number eight, which is Board Comment. No action, no public comment will be taken. Item number 11, excuse me. Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything for us today?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
All right, I just have one comment today. We did have a Story County resident, who's been here for a long time, pass away, Honey Lee Kernut, apparently passed away on September 11th. She came to Virginia City in the early 80s, worked at a ton of businesses, I believe, including the Silver Dollar Saloon, she might have been related to somebody, but if we could just have a moment of silence for Honey, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Concludes Board Comment. It's going to bring us to item number 12, as a recess convenes the Story County Highway Board, bringing us to our public hearing, which is item number 13. We're going to go ahead and open up this public hearing. If there's any public comments, this is your time to come up to the podium.
I'm not sure if there's anybody else. Kathy Canfield for the record. So, I just wanted to let you know, after the last Board of Highways meeting, I have spoken with Mr. Zachary, who I believe here was, had, making comments at the last meeting. Since that time, we've talked, he happened to drop in, I think he was at the courthouse for something else and dropped into chat. We talked about what this whole process, this RS 2477 process is, and what he's interested in. My interpretation from talking with him is he wants this process to go steps further than what we're doing. We're taking this as small chunks at a time, and just doing the, recognizing these pieces of road that are on public land. There are pieces of these roads that do go across private property. He's interested in us looking at all those pieces also. We're not opposed to that, it's just not the chunk of what we're doing at the moment. So, but he understands that. And then the second part of his concern is some of these roads may have historic significance in wanting to preserve those roads. You know, I understand that, too. I don't think any of us are necessarily opposed to that idea, it's just, again, not what we're doing at the moment. One of the things I did tell him is what the planning department is looking at for the future is to come up with a trails plan or a road plan for the county. This would be more the trails, not the actual physical roads that everybody's paving and Public Works takes care of. And at that point, once we come up with a trail plan for the county, we'll be working with, Sheriff's Office has a lot of ideas on OHV items, Public Works, Commissioner Mitchell, we've talked about things in the past, too, about trails and trying to connect places. Once we kind of look at that and have some priorities, I think we'll go back to this RS 2477 and see where some of these connections across private property might make sense, and then we will move forward with those pieces at a time. And I think, and then for historic roads, you know, we'll also look at that as, as things come up. So, as far as the trail system things, I'm, as a planning department, we're looking to add that into our strategic plan. We've got a lot of different projects going on right now, so there's budgeting concerns with that, there's potentially legal concerns with some of that, so our DA's office will need to be involved. So, trying to identify a lot of those things and get those into everybody's budgets and everybody's work programs will take a little bit of time. So, that's also something that we're looking at for down the road, but it's not happening immediately. But, I guess to make a long story short, I think Mr. Zachary is satisfied, he told me he's not objecting to any of the stuff that we're doing. He's just really wanting those steps further, and we recognize that, so I can answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, you have any questions for Kathy at this time?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Kathy, I have just one, and it's kind of procedural. I noticed the three road segments in the public hearing that we're holding right now, and then we are considering approval of four resolutions. That fourth one, if I, remind me, we have held the public hearing already, but continue adopting the resolution on that one, and that's why it's back on our agenda?
I believe it was continued at the last, unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting, but I believe it was continued to this meeting, because it's a Board of Highways meeting, so that will be addressed today. We had the public hearing for that at the last point, we had some comments. I think there was, it was continued to have some further discussion, and so it's back on the agenda for you to consider again today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Is there any other public comment before we close out this public hearing? All right, Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah. Commissioner Mitchell, move to close the public hearing on the proposed resolutions 25-798, 25-799, and 25-800.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to item number 14, which is Discussion for Possible Action. Discussion of Possible Approval of Resolution 25-798 Proposes the Identification of Story County Road Number 911490. Two segments. Jessica?
Hello, Jessica Prager for the record. This is one of our RS 2477 roads in the program. This road is unnamed and located north of Six Mile Canyon and east of Virginia City. The road is in two sections because of The road is in two sections because of how the road splits. The surveyor had to do it in, in two sections.
Anything else?
Yeah, no.
Sorry. Thank you, Jessica. Commissioner Gilman, you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, I'm good.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to. In coordinate, in, in accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash seven nine eight that proposes the identification of Story County Road number nine one one four nine zero. Two segments, commonly known as unnamed segment one. Total road segment length, four hundred and fifty-four feet or point oh nine miles. Average, overall average disturbed width approximately twelve feet. And unnamed segment two, total road length of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two feet or point five four miles. Overall average disturbed width approximately twelve feet. As a minor county road, the effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number fifteen. This is discussion for possible action. Discussion of possible approval of resolution twenty-five dash seven nine nine proposes the identification of Story County Road number nine one zero three four five. Jessica?
Jessica Prager, for the record. Although all the needed information was available on our website, some attachments, items were missing from the packet. So out of abundance of caution, we will continue this resolution to the next meeting.
All right. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Uh, no, thanks.
Is there any public comment? Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion to push this out?
Yeah, I can do that. I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to continue item number fifteen, dealing with resolution twenty-five dash seven nine nine to our next regular scheduled meeting on October twenty-first here at the courthouse.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number sixteen, which is discussion for possible action. Discussion of possible approval of resolution twenty-five dash eight hundred proposes the identification of Story County Road number nine one one zero one zero. Jessica?
Jessica Prager, for the record. Same situation, although all the information was available on our website, some attachment items were missing from the packet. So out of abundance of caution, we will continue this resolution to the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thank you.
How about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I'm happy to do so. I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to continue item number sixteen, dealing with resolution twenty-five eight hundred, to our next regular scheduled meeting on October twenty-first here at the courthouse.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, can I actually ask a question?
Sure.
This is the Board of Highway Commissioners, and they usually meet just the first meeting of the month. So I'm curious if maybe Brian can weigh in, if it's okay to do this at the next meeting, or if we do need to wait to the following one.
The agenda that's supposed to, it's supposed to is including the Highway Board. It'd be funny to have that on the next meeting.
Thank you, Brian. Where do we leave off? You're going to read a motion?
Yeah, I think we were ready, we were ready to vote.
You were just about to.
Just about to vote, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Austin, does, does it cause us problems to hold a, or to include a Highway Board meeting in our, in our next meeting, even though it's not the way we normally schedule it?
No, Austin Osborne, for the record, as long as Brian's okay with it legally, it doesn't cause any challenges. We just upvote him.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
We have a motion in a second already, I believe.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number seventeen. This is discussion for possible action. Discussion of possible approval of resolution twenty-five dash seven nine three proposes the identification of Story County Road number nine one zero two two zero. Three segments. Jessica?
Jessica Prager, for the record. This is the road that was continued from the previous Board of Highway Commissioners meeting. This road is in three segments, with the three segments commonly known as Freedom Hill slash Tunnel Road. The road is a continuous road, but broken into three sections due to being located in, in different townships, range, and sections.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. In accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash seven nine three, which proposes the identification of Story County Road number nine one zero two two zero. Three segments, commonly known as Freedom Hill Tunnel Road, segment one. Total segment length of thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two feet or two point five one miles. Overall average disturbed width approximately fourteen feet. And Freedom Hill Tunnel Road, segment two, total road segment length of seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six feet or one point four three miles. Overall average disturbed width of approximately fourteen feet. And Freedom Hill Tunnel Road, segment three, total road segment length of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three feet or point three five miles. Average, overall average disturbed width of approximately fourteen feet. It is proposed that the road be identified as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motors at their own risk.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number eighteen, which is discussion only. No action will be taken. We have the report of the Public Works Department regarding roads and highways throughout Story County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Northen, project manager, reporting for Director Wiersbicki. The 2025 road rehab rehabilitation project is almost complete. Just a small bit of work to finish on the top of Union Street, some slurry work there. The truck turnaround is complete at the bottom of Six Mile Canyon. And then the last bit of this is, the crew is getting all of the equipment and trucks prepped for winter. And I won't have any further.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments for Mike?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Uh, no, thanks.
All right. Appreciate the update. Moving on to item number nineteen. It's a recess to reconvene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number twenty, which is discussion only. Presentation by Adam Carpenter from the UNR Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lisa Mestall, administrative officer, for the record. I just wanted to make a formal introduction to Adam Carpenter from UNR and let him tell you what they can offer the county.
Great. Hi, Adam Carpenter, the Extension County Coordinator for Story County, for the record. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak to you all today. The first thing that I'd like to mention, so we, when I took over this role in January, one of our, one of our big priorities was to get back into Story County, provide, you know, really expand on the, the programming that we've historically provided and, and grow that with some new opportunities. And the first thing that I'd like to do is to introduce my new colleague, Tisha Carper Long. She's a part-time instructor with a focus in Story County. She'll be able to help with youth, adults, seniors, working with community partners to find out specifically what, what needs of the community are. So far, she's already taken part with our 4-H program. We've had a few different, she's helped to bring STEM education into our, into our schools. So we've already had, last week, we had a few different dates where she provided STEM education to K through five students at Gallagher and Hillside Elementary School. And next week, we'll be doing that same thing again. So a couple of dates each. We've already had some great conversations with, with community partners. The Senior Center Community Chest will be taking part in the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Lockwood, the new community center there. So again, we are really looking forward to seeing, you know, what we can do, how we can partner with the community. And again, now that we have her, with her focus in Story County, we'll be able to, to really provide a lot of, of new and exciting programming for the community. We also have our traditional programs, the Master Gardener Program, which we're, we, our office is based in Carson, but we're really hoping to get that back up and running. We have, I've had two potential Master Gardener interviews for Story County, who both live in Virginia City. So hopefully, that'll be a really great asset. The community here can always call our office, and I'll have business cards available. If they do have questions, we are hoping to build partnerships, work potentially on a greenhouse project up here, and get the community garden kind of reinstated and, and back up and running for the community here. We also have the, the Living with Fire Program, which can really help, help protect defense, defensible space. We're hoping to do maybe some, some town hall forums or some kind of community events where we can bring in the, the experts with the fire, the Living with Fire Program, to help residents prepare themselves and, and help expand fire awareness. We, of course, have our Radon Awareness Program. Radon is particularly, it's a particular, you know, worry, I would say, with, with Carson and Story County, as it can be in a lot of these older buildings. It can present itself as sort of an unnoticed risk to residents. So we highly encourage finding out more information about that. And again, are always happy to, to share information with the community on how they can help to detect Radon in their homes, in their businesses, and what they can do to prevent, to prevent as well. And then the last thing I want to talk about is we are going to be performing another needs assessment through the Unit, University Extension Program. The last one was done by my predecessor in 2019. So we'll be really looking forward to community sport, support. We'll be working with a lot of the local businesses as well to help get the word out. And that'll be a great way for us to really identify, again, what the needs are for community members, for businesses. And, you know, again, we're, we're happy to, to be here representing Story County and look forward to all the great partnerships and, and projects we can work on in the future. So, and I would love to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for that, Adam. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Adam?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Um, I don't either. Thanks, thanks for the report, Adam. And Tisha, welcome.
Yeah, welcome. And glad this is kind of getting fired back up again. So appreciate you guys making the trip up.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right on to item number twenty-one. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven nine seven, a resolution establishing the salary grade range, excuse me, grade and salary range of employees fixed by ordinance or resolution pursuant to NRS 245 dot zero four five for appointed Story County officials for the twenty-five through twenty-six fiscal year and superseding prior year resolutions for appointed Story County employees. Brandy?
Good morning, once again, Commissioners. Brandy Lopez, for the record. This resolution updates the county's grade and salary schedule for appointed officials and employers to ensure, employees to ensure alignment with current operational needs and accurate classification of positions. The proposed changes include the addition of a communications supervisor at a grade one thirty-three to reflect the newly established position within the Communications Department, the addition of an intermittent part-time radio technician at grade one forty-four to perform specialized maintenance of radio equipment for the Sheriff's Office, and the correction of the communications manager, grade two, grade one forty, to ensure proper placement within the salary schedule. The addition of these positions and salary adjustments has been approved in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget and will be absorbed within the approved allocations. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty-five seven nine seven as presented to update and maintain the county's appointed employee grade and salary schedule in compliance with NRS two four five point zero four five.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve resolution number twenty-five dash seven nine seven, a resolution establishing the grade and salary range of employees fixed by ordinance or resolution pursuant to NRS two four, two four five dot oh four five for appointed Story County officials for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year and superseding prior year resolutions for appointed Story County employees. The resolution includes the addition of communications supervisor at grade one thirty-three, an intermittent part-time radio technician at grade one forty-four, and the correction of the grade for communications manager at grade, to grade one forty.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number twenty-two. Recession to reconvene as the Story County Fire Protection District Board, bringing us to the long-awaited item number twenty-three. Resolution twenty-five dash seven nine six, a resolution honoring the service and retirement of Battalion Chief Shane Dixon. Chief?
Again, Fire Chief Bob Reiser, for the record. We did this last month for Chief Longcar. And we have the same for now-retired Battalion Chief Shane Dixon. And I'll read the resolution. It's a little hard to read in its shiny, historic format.
In its cursive format, you mean?
Yes. I need a magnifying glass. I'm getting old. A resolution honoring the retirement of Shane Dixon. Whereas Battalion Chief Dixon has honorably dedicated over twenty-five years of exemplary service to the Nevada Fire Service, almost all with our Story County Fire Protection District, and whereas his unwavering commitment and contributions have greatly benefited the district and community, and whereas Battalion Chief Dixon has retired on this seventh day of October 2025, concluding a distinguished career and leaving a lasting legacy of excellence and dedication. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Fire Commissioners of the Story County Fire Protection District expresses its gratitude and congratulations to Battalion Chief Dixon, Dixon, and wishes him a fulfilling retirement, passed and adopted the seventh of October 2025.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No.
Uh, just want to take a moment. Thank you, Shane, for your years of service in Story County. Much appreciated. Is there any public comment? Uh, not seeing any public comment. Yes, no? Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash seven nine six, a resolution honoring the service and retirement of Battalion Chief Shane Dixon, recognizing his dedicated service and leadership in the Story County Fire Protection District and the community.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, he looks retired.
Yeah. He already walks a lot slower. All right. Moving right along to item number twenty-four. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of memorandum of understanding between Story County Fire Protection District and the Story County Firefighters Association 4227 as it pertains to Article forty incentive pay. Chief?
So we're requesting a modification to the labor contract in relation to this. What we found when we originally drafted that we wanted to establish some criteria, and EMS instructors seemed like an appropriate criteria to at least establish a baseline. And what we determined after having put that into play was that it worked initially, but it didn't mean that the, the certification didn't mean that they were going to be a great preceptor, and they were going to teach the best skill set to our incoming EMS providers. So we're requesting to modify that. And as you see, it reads, now they will be required to have three years of service at the rank or above, and they will have to pass a, a written test to verify that they have a true understanding of the skills to which they will be teaching. Doesn't change anything to the incentive. The incentive amount stays the same. It just removes that EMS instructor language and creates different language to replace it.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Fire Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Fire Commissioner Mitchell?
I think we're good.
How about public comment? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Fire Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Story County Firefighters Association Local 4227 outlining the changes to Article forty, category six, preceptor pay in the 2023 to 2026 collective bargaining agreement referred to as Amendment Three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number twenty-five. This is discussion for possible action. To approve revisions to policy P dash seven zero one, accord, and cor- To approve revisions to Policy P-701 and corresponding MOU for Article 25 as well as P-310 and corresponding MOU for Article 41, the negotiated labor agreement to increase lateral hire opportunities. Chief?
So what we found, we started last year, we hired our first lateral firefighter paramedic. We're seeing a definite challenge in the post-COVID era of bringing on employees within our field. And one of the things that we have the opportunity to do is bring in already seasoned and trained employees from other places throughout our state or other states that are looking for a better climate, we'll say that. To do so, a couple of the challenges we identified is our health insurance policy as it was set with that, as well as the labor contract reflected that they wouldn't have access for the first 60 days into the following month. And then the second piece was that because they already have a significant skill set coming in, they don't require the same amount of probationary time because they've already learned the skills. So we're really teaching them more about Story County than about how to do the job. So that necessitated a reduction to a six-month probationary period. So we're looking for combined a reduction to 30 days for the health insurance and a reduction to six months for the lateral, for the probationary period.
All right, thank you, Chief. Fire Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
I'm good.
What's going on over there? Vice Chairman Mitchell? No candy for J, okay.
It's a cough drop, man.
A public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. Fire Commissioner Mitchell moved to approve the modifications to Policy P-701 on the MOU for Article 25 referred to as Amendment Number 1, as well as P-310 on the MOU for Article 41 referred to as Amendment Number 2.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. There we go. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number 26, this is recess to reconvene us, the Story County Board of County Commissioners. Bringing us to item number 27, which is discussion for possible action. Possible approval of budget increase from $150,000 to $200,000 for a new 2024 Model Ram 5500 service truck for fleet services with tooling and associated equipment. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Northen, on behalf of Director Weersbakey. This item deals with a 2024 Ram 5500 HD Mechanics Crane Body Service Truck. Original budget $150,000. Closest to budget would be $164,500. This is for a new stock 2024 model with increased factory rebates, concessions, and discounts. As a comparator, a new 2025 model year truck, comparable truck, would be $195,000 to $205,000, and that does not include the tooling or equipment costs. There would be a nine-to-12-month build time before delivery and before they could get it into service, which would push it into the next budget year. So with additional tools and diagnostic equipment to service the new truck, $164,500 plus the tooling and equipment, they're asking for an increase in the budget to $200,000 for this item. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments about this item?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good.
All right, how about public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Mitchell moved to approve the budget increase for a new 2024 model year service truck with tooling and equipment for fleet services from $150,000 to $200,000.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 28, discussion for possible action. Discussion of possible direction to county staff to review and propose for future board consideration of possible code amendments, fee amendments, and/or reductions related to Story County Code Chapter 1, 3.118, parks, including the county pool. Laura?
Thank you, Laura Mather for the record. This is part of my ongoing process to identify fees that affect both our residents, our citizens, and our businesses that can possibly be reduced. So this is a direction-only agenda, meaning this will basically just start a very long process of two agenda readings and DA review and that kind of stuff. So today I do have some recommendations based on staff meetings that we would like to see in this proposal. But I'm happy to take your recommendations, your suggestions, your changes, and then what I'll do is take those, come back later with an actual formal agenda to implement that into this chapter. So although this chapter does not specifically, so Story County Code's Chapter 13.118 does not specifically spell out fees with regard to parks or the pool, however, there was a resolution that was done in 2004 that established some fees for Miners Park. That would be use of the ball field was $100 per day. The lighting was, I have, sorry, typo, the lighting to pay for, the lighting in the ball field when you're using it, that was $15 an hour. The gazebo picnic area was $100, and plus there was a $100 refundable cleaning deposit. So for the park specific, now to step back, the other parks we don't charge anything for. So Mark Twain, the Highlands, and the Lewis Perry Park, we don't charge for those. So staff recommendation for further agenda would be to remove all of the fees for Miners Park except for that refundable cleaning deposit. So moving on to the pool, the current pool fees are daily admission is $5, individual season pass is $80. There's a family season pass of three or more immediate family members. The first person is $80, second person is $80, each additional person is $50 after that. So overall, for both the parks and the pool, and again, this is just staff recommendation, I'm happy to take recommendations for the board, is that we again remove the, or reduce the park fees to zero, keeping that $100 refundable cleaning deposit, and leaving the pool fees all as they are. And I'm happy to go into a little more detail as to why we decided that. Again, it was meeting with key staff, mostly Public Works, who handles the management of that. And Jesse Fane is here if you have questions specifically for her.
All right, thank you.
But I'm happy to take questions or suggestions on this.
Sounds good, thank you very much. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I do not, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I guess the thing that's in my mind is, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about my support for reducing fees overall wherever possible. One of the things that's on my mind has to do with making sure that the facilities are still available to our residents, and if we remove fees completely, I'm wondering if usage will go up dramatically from both those who are here in the county and potentially those who are outside the county. And I'm wondering if that may lead to a different problem, which is availability of facilities. I'd love to see them get used a lot, but I also want to make sure they're available for our residents. And so I'm wondering if maybe looking at some sort of an in-county, out-of-county situation or something like that. Anyway, just thoughts around usage and making sure that they remain available.
So that's actually one of the things that we talked about. So when we had our meeting, we talked about, okay, if we do in-county, out-county, how's that going to, how's that going to affect? If we take away the fees altogether, how's that going to affect? So we really went over all of the various possibilities. That's one of the reasons why for the pool, we feel it's necessary to leave the fees as they are, because it's, you know, it's not that large of a pool. There's not a lot of area for everybody to congregate. We wanted to make sure that it was still, it wasn't overcrowded, frankly. So that's one of the reasons why we left the pool fees as they are. We felt that trying to keep track of who was an in-county resident and who was an out-of-county resident would be difficult, particularly because of our zip codes. You know, how do we show, I mean, do we have to have a map that shows that somebody's actually in the Story County section of, you know, the Mark Twain Dayton area, or are they just across the street and they're actually in Dayton? Or they live in the Highlands, but their zip code is South Reno? So we felt that was going to be a burden on our staff. It's difficult to get lifeguards as it is and to have that additional burden of them to try to police everybody. And then what if you have, you know, kids that come that are 12 or 13, they don't have ID, they can't show where they live? So that's, you know, again, one of the reasons why we decided not to try to distinguish between in and out-of-county residents. I don't believe that we are concerned about if we take away that fee for the park, that it will be a mad rush to use it. There's an adult softball team that uses that field, and so we really wanted to take away that financial burden, because what a great way for our citizens to get together, to have physical activity, and to not pay that rental fee and then the lighting fee, we felt was a great way to encourage outdoor activity.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, Austin Osburn for the record. I'm going to add what I've been told, and Jesse Fane is here as well as Laura, that might clarify or correct me if I'm wrong. At the pool, you're also dealing with a dynamic where a lot of the people that are dealing with the customers are kids, are very close to being kids, and so already, just because it's the nature of life, sometimes they run into irate customers who come and cause them trouble, and you're talking about a 15-year-old, or 16, or 17, or even 18-year-old, that isn't exactly going to be feeling very comfortable taking on confrontation with people. And so far, we have that address, but when you start looking at what Laura described as people coming in and having to validate where they live, and they say, I live in Lockwood, but they're whatever, you know, their show says they live in Sparks, or I live in Mark Twain, but their driver's license says they live in Dayton, now that is a very substantial challenge to try to work around. It's not necessarily an impact on staff, we can always work things out, but that's one of the kind of real-life things that do happen in the field that we're trying to work around and what Laura's making a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, I applaud your idea for the reduction of fees. I don't know if there's a way to work in maybe a punch card or some sort of, like we do with dump passes?
Vouchers of some kind for?
Yep, for local kids, if we give it to them, they can give the voucher to the pool. If it's a non-resident, they pay the $5 if they don't have the voucher. Anyway, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. Maybe we can explore, excuse me, punch cards or something, you know?
Yeah, and just to clarify, I think, I think my initial comment was pointed more directly at park reservations, not so much at pool, though I'm certainly in favor of looking at a way to make sure our residents, you know, are advantaged there as well. But I was thinking specifically of people reserving the gazebo, you know, if that, if there's no fee attached, that becomes a very attractive option in my opinion. I think it's a really nice facility for birthday parties, you know, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, if it becomes known that it's available to anyone without a cost other than the refundable cleaning fee, I'm just wondering if there is the potential for it to pick up so much steam, maybe we go ahead and then look, monitor the usage, and if it's, if it's getting really jammed, then maybe we have to roll it back or something. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like.
So to clarify, to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, so, so direction would be for me to explore the possibility when it comes to parks to leave the fees as is, but see if it's, if we can do some sort of voucher system for county residents?
No.
No.
Yeah, vouchers have to do with the pool admission specifically?
Pool, okay.
Yeah.
I thought he was referring to the pool. And so that, that's the only reason I suggested the vouchers for the pool specifically, not necessarily for the park.
Okay, so then would your suggestion be to leave the pool fees as is, but explore the possibility of a voucher system for the pool?
I'm fine with that. I don't know, I mean, obviously, we have expenses that are there. I mean, I'd ask Jesse, you know, is there a disadvantage to not charging a fee?
So now you're talking about the park or the pool?
Pool, just pool.
A disadvantage to not charge?
Uh-huh. Is that going to, I mean, impact us at all? I mean?
Yeah, I think the view would definitely be overcrowded.
Okay.
But there is going to be some challenges if it is two different prices for a county resident versus not.
Can you just say your name?
Jesse Fane for the record.
Okay, thank you.
A lot in those same lines. I mean, how are we running as far as capacity goes? And I'm asking because if we were to reduce the fees, not to make it free, keep it one tier, but reduce them down so it's really affordable, just trying to figure out if we're using it to capacity, we think, we feel like it's, it's going to be overcrowded even if we do something like that.
Are you talking about the park or the pool?
Pool.
Reducing the fee from $5 to something less for out-of-county people?
No, overall.
Overall. Yeah, it's such a minimal fee to begin with.
I know it seems that way, but I've got four kids, so it adds up pretty quick. And so that's the kind of situation that I'm looking at, is, is there a way that, is it potentially going to overwhelm? I don't, I don't want to change the quality of the experience, right? But if we're not using it to capacity, I'd certainly like to look at a way to make it more accessible for residents.
No, I think we use it to capacity for sure.
Okay, very good.
As it sits now.
Thank you.
Very good, that's helpful.
So really, I'll let you give her direction, because I don't want to confuse them, I don't.
Yeah, totally fine. So I'm, as, as long as there's not a feeling that by removing fees for park reservations, that that's going to potentially overwhelm or limit access because it may become so popular, as long as we feel pretty comfortable that we're not going to be overrun by out-of-county people using it to the exclusion of in-county folks, totally fine with that. With the pool, I would definitely support an idea of looking at some sort of a voucher or something to provide a benefit to those who live within the county. Doesn't change anything on the, on the front end as far as what's going on.
Maybe out-of-county folks, the fee goes up, and that would maybe keep out-of-county folks out, if that's a problem.
But again, a two-tiered makes it more complicated for those who are collecting.
How often is the park being used? Is that a lot?
The pool, we're talking just pool.
Oh, you're talking pool, sorry.
Sorry. I'm back to the park now.
We need to have signs we can hold up for which one we're talking about.
Note to self, have two separate agendas.
There you go. Thank you. We need more of those, so that's good. I think the pool is at capacity, the park is probably not used at capacity. That's my understanding, is that right, Jesse?
Yeah, I have a park comment if we're on park now.
Yeah.
Okay, so the park, the part that you rent or reserve is the gazebo section. You don't get the entire thing, we can't make a private party. So if somebody wants to, they can always have the other side of the park for no fee. So I don't think by removing the fee to use it is going to be a problem or cause a huge influx, although I do agree that non-county should pay a fee, otherwise those reservations might make it unavailable for county people. But there's always the other side of the park that can be used to.
We can control that by reservation, because you have to have a reservation for that.
Yeah, that's not as hard to verify where they live or where the business that's having the party is based out of. That's easier, that's in the main office with people with computers. Down at the pool, they have an iPad, they don't have a computer, internet's not great, that's not something those kids can sit there and do when you've got a line of people trying to get in and argue. There will be arguing. And as for the park, another thing that just needs to be in the back of everybody's head to remember is most of those reservations and parties take place on Saturday and Sunday. There is not a Public Works employee on staff. So if there was a conflict at that point, you came along, you had it reserved, and someone ignored the little sign sitting there, who are they calling, cops? So we need to think about that. Hasn't been a problem as of yet, but it could be.
Okay, thank you very much for taking the time to be here.
So I would be comfortable looking at maintaining the fee for out-of-county usage on the park, eliminating it for in-county usage. I don't know if the same exact thing applies when we move over to the softball usage, but, or I'm fine with getting rid of that completely as long as it's reserved properly. I think that's a little more specialized right here, and I don't think we're going to be overrun by roving bands of softball. I think that's a little more specialized right here, and I don't think we're gonna be overrun by ro- roaming bands of softball kickers. I, I mean, I could be wrong, but, uh,
Yeah.
Okay, so, if I can just clarify, Laura Mather for the record. Pool, um, because the pool is pretty much at capacity, we're gonna leave the pool fees as, as they are. Park, we're going to, um, explore having the park fees remain, sorry, the gazebo fee remaining as is for out-of-county residents, um, removing the rental fee for in-county residents, keeping the deposit for in- or out-of-county residents. And then, removing the ball field usage and the lighting usage. Because, it's my understanding that the softball team is like seventy-five percent Virginia City residents, and, you know, twenty-five percent, so we don't wanna split up the team and have a problem there. So we'll, we'll remove the fees for, um, the park uses, usage, except for the gazebo, which will be, um, removed for residents, not removed for out-of-county residents. Clear as mud.
That sounds good to me. Commissioner Gilman, are you good?
I'm great.
Okay?
Deposit only for in-county residents for the gazebo.
Vice Chairman, you good?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Jesse Fain, I just wanna put one more opinion in there, just so y'all know. Um, so, the six years I've been over there at Public Works, taking care of this park and this reservation, I have yet to have anybody who has left a mess. So, there's a little part of me that's like, is this deposit really necessary?
Is it, is it a hassle to deal with the deposit?
A little bit, um, 'cause a lot of people wanna pay it with credit cards, so then there's, it's so much time to, to refund it back to them, same with if they were to give us a check, if we de- deposited it, we would have to set them up as a vendor to reimburse them. So, if they reserved it several months in advance and gave us a check, it's stale-dated, if we don't cash it, we just sit on it. It, it's a little bit.
Do you, you don't take driver's license pictures, do you?
No.
May- maybe that's an option, they can send you a picture of their driver's license, and they leave the park a mess, and we can go after them, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, just some, some things to think about.
Instead of taking, 'cause you run the card, right, or you just keep the number?
Uh, the credit card?
Yeah.
No, we do not store credit card information whatsoever.
Okay, so if I reserve the park, and I, and I said, "I wanna pay the deposit with a credit card," you physically run it?
Run it right then.
And then, when there's no problem, five days later, you refund it? Okay, so that's obviously-
We're, we're even allowed to do refunds through the credit card, we have to write them a check.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd say get rid of that. That just sounds like a hassle.
I think, you know, and, and we'll see what happens, I mean, if someone was to make a real mess, there's cameras, and then there's a,
There you go.
Please get involved, if they were to trash the place, if they leave some garbage around, we'll just take our chances.
I, I'm comfortable removing the deposit.
And the other part of that is too, let's say they have a Saturday party, again, no staff. I don't know if somebody made that mess on Sunday, I don't know if the wind blew it over from the senior center, you know, so,
Right.
It's kinda hard to pin it.
Yeah, they have wild rages over the senior center.
We will, they're coming. So, I would say we remove the deposit.
Okay, so we're going to remove the deposit, um, but keep the reservation system.
Yes, that's pretty critical, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Great, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, are you prepared for a motion?
Yeah, uh, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to direct county staff to review Story County Ordinance Chapter thirteen dot one-one-eight Parks, including provisions related to the county pool, uh, as discussed on the record, and return to the board with the final draft reflecting any recommended updates.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you Jesse for being here, thank you Laura. Moving right along to item number twenty-nine. Discussion for possible action, consideration of possible approval to award Lockwood residents ten thousand dollars in community project funding for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six to purchase and install gazebo at Louis Perry Park. Sarah?
Sarah Sturts, for the record. So the county allocates ten thousand dollars per district each fiscal year for the community project funding. For this fiscal year, two applications were submitted from Lockwood. One application was for the purchasing and installation of a gazebo at Perry Park, and the other application proposed to clear and improve the area around the Story County Community Garden in Lockwood, including weed abatement, debris removal, and redevelopment of the Louis Perry Fitness Course. So the Community Project Funding Committee comprised of Lindsay Simmons, Morgan Wyman, Laura Mather, uh, Lindy Renaud, Jessica Prager, and me reviewed both of these applications, and after we reviewed them, we determined to award ten thousand dollars in community project funding for this fiscal year to purchase and install the gazebo at Louis Perry Park. The committee did not recommend funding for the other application submitted. The review committee stated that the community already has access to weeding supplies previously purchased by the county through this community project funding grant. Important portions of the fitness equipment appear to be deteriorating, and some pieces are even overgrown with weeds, and issues related to debris and abandoned vehicles and county property are more appropriately addressed the community develop- development nuisance program.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Um, Sarah, were, were these two applications the only ones that came from Lockwood? I know there was talk of some others, that they were, some of the community members were talking about.
Those were the only two that were submitted.
Very good, thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to award the Lockwood residents ten thousand dollars in community project funding for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six to purchase and install a gazebo at Louis Perry Park.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Onto item number thirty, can we beat the buzzer, you think, Lisa? Consideration of possible approval to make a formal contingent offer to owners of a parcel surrounding the Gold Hill Depot to satisfy a land conversion issue related to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Can I cut it off there, I don't wanna double up on the reading?
That's fine.
Lisa?
Uh, Lisa, myself for the record. Nope.
Thank you, Brian.
Um, so this is a follow-up on a process that has kinda been ongoing for the land conversion issue between Miners Park, specifically where the community chess building sits at, and looking for property to fulfill the requirements of that conversion. So, we looked at seven properties down around the Gold Hill Depot area, reached out to all seven property owners, and six of them responded that they were interested in possibly selling these properties to the county for this purpose, for fair market value. So, on August fifth, we got approval to, um, request the yellow book appraisals. Anthony Wren came back on September eighteenth, I believe, with the appraisals for the six parcels. That one, that we did not receive a response back from, from the property owner, we did not have an appraisal done on that property. So, um, that was through the Sutro Tunnel Company. So if they were decided to come back to us at a later time, we can relook at it at that point in time, but as of this moment, we are not considering that property. So the appraisals came back in, and in total for these six properties came in at one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And title and escrow would be estimated at eight thousand forty dollars, roughly. But, um, you know, those, those prices could change as the title and escrow updates their rates as they go through it. So, the next step that we did was we, Sarah Sturts and I are, are grants managers, she's been working in conjunction with me on this project, we-
Please hold.
Oh, oh wait. Okay, you guys good?
Gotta write it out.
No shortcuts.
Probably good.
Okay. All right, so, um, so I gathered a bunch of information for Sarah, and she submitted, um, the information to Department of Interior, National Park Service, and we did receive a tentative approval letter for these parcels, but, coming back from that, they gave us a checklist of all these other requirements that we have to do within three hundred and sixty-five days of that letter. So, we have a, um, draft offer form contingent that's with the DA for review currently, um, and we will go through, with the board's permission, to make a contingent formal offer to these property owners based off of their appraisal values. And it would be contingent on all these items being required, and the Park Service coming back and saying that there is a formal approval for it before the actual purchase can go through. And then we would put the close date out, all the way out to that three hundred and sixty-five day requirement for that, that came from that letter. Uh, and if everything is good, this is an unbudgeted request at this time, so we worked with the comptroller, and she said, just to make sure that you guys were aware, that this is an unbudgeted request at this time, but we could go forward. But it is gonna take, um, quite a bit of time to receive everything. We may also have to get another appraisal on the Miners Park property under community chess, 'cause it's been a while. We'll, we're still waiting for formal approvals for that to come through. Uh, but if there's any questions specific on that information from the parks, um, Sarah is here to answer all those questions. But, so what I'm basically seeking is the, um, approval to make the formal request to these property owners. The full appraisals are over a hundred pages, so they are online, and so the addendum that was put into the packet has the link on there for those appraisals, and just the summaries were included in the, um, agenda packet.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Um, I actually have a procedural one, and, and Brian, I may need to ask for a little guidance here. Um, I, first, I should probably disclose that one of my assignments is, is on the VNT Railway Commission, which is the owner of two of these parcels, and I'm currently serving as the chair of that commission, and as such, it's likely that that will be considered, should this go forward on that side as well. And so, Brian, I'm not sure if that's, uh, if, if there's an element of that that would be disqualifying from a perspective of deliberating on this item.
I think the disclosure is appropriate.
Very good, thank you. So I make that disclosure, and I, I don't feel that my assignment there influences my ability to make the proper decisions on this item, thank you.
All right.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, are you prepared to make a motion, Vice Chairman?
Yeah, uh, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve Story County to make a formal contingent offer. Offers to property owners will be contingent on meeting all requirements of the LWCF program conversion requirements with an estimated timeframe of three hundred and sixty-five days to close on the following parcel numbers and recommended amounts based on appraised value and title and escrow fees as follows. Oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash two-seven for forty-four thousand dollars, oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash two-two for twenty-eight thousand five hundred, oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash twenty-four for twenty-eight thousand five hundred, oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash twenty-five for thirty-three thousand dollars, oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash twenty-six for twenty-six thousand five hundred, and oh-oh-two dash oh-six-three dash twenty-seven for twenty-six thousand five hundred, and title and escrow fees estimated at one thousand three hundred and forty dollars per parcel in accordance with the appraisals completed on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five by Anthony Wren to satisfy a land conversion issue related to the Land and Water Conservation Fund, or LWCF, grant received by the county in twenty-sixteen in accordance with CFR thirty-six, Chapter one, Part thirty-nine, and the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund utilized to replace park equipment in Miners Park with an estimated cost of a hundred and ninety-five thousand and forty dollars, which includes title and escrow fees.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Lisa, good luck with that. Onto item number thirty-one is to recess to convene us the Story County Water and Sewer Board, bringing us to item number thirty-two, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval for the county, Jesus, consideration of possible approval for the county manager to sign and approve the Dowell Service Task Order number eighty-four for pre-construction services for the Gold Hill water, Gold Hill wastewater system amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Chris?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As I said in my staff report, this task order authorizes Dowell to provide, uh, engineering and environmental services needed for the Gold Hill Wastewater Collection System project. This project is one of our fiscal year twenty-four awarded federal appropriations, and is being partially funded by the EPA. And again, this, uh, task order is a not to exceed in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, three hundred, excuse me, amount of three hundred and thirty-one and thousand, three hundred and one dollars, excuse me.
Problem, all right, thank you, Chris. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chairman Mitchell?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, how about public comment? Not seeing any, uh, Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the county manager to sign and approve the Dowell Service Task Order number eighty-four for pre-construction services for the Gold Hill Collection System project, amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Onto item number thirty-three, discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of an auger monster related parts and equipment for the sewer treatment plant on Six Mile Canyon in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Northen, uh, on behalf of plant operator Jacob Nelson, uh, we need to replace the auger monster and related equipment and components at the sewer plant. Uh, the original estimate for the parts and equipment several months ago was sixty-eight thousand five hundred, uh, with a current price of one hundred thousand. It is a required piece of equipment for the plant at the Headworks. I would be happy to answer any questions, although this is not my industry, so I don't know much about auger monsters.
No problem, thank you, Mike. I think it's a blender of sorts. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
Public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the purchase of an auger monster related parts and equipment for the sewer treatment plant on Six Mile Canyon in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Sarah.
Uh, onto item number thirty-four is to recess to reconvene us the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number thirty-six, which is discussion for possible action. It's the second, uh, second reading of business licenses A through N. Uh, Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Um, I do just one, and one of the, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this on the first reading, but I think that was the meeting where I came in late. Um, I, item number N is a business that I have received some, um, some complaints and concern from constituents about, and I'd, I'd like to ask to continue that, um, to look into it just a little bit further before we approve the second reading.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Do, Brian, do we have to disregard all the second readings, or do we just remove that one from the second reading list?
You would just remove that, I, you can move forward with your other items.
Thank you, Brian. All right, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion with the modification?
I think so, yeah. I move to approve the second reading of businesses listed under item thirty-six as A through M, as in Mary, and to continue item number N to our next regularly scheduled meeting on October twenty-first.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number thirty-seven is the second and final time for public comment during this meeting. Is there any public comment in the courtroom? Come on down.
Lisa, myself for the record, I just have a quick, um, correction on my agenda item, if it's okay.
The agenda item we already covered?
Yes.
Okay.
On item number thirty, the parcel, um, zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash two-seven was listed twice. That first one should have been zero-zero-two, zero-six-three, two-zero for forty-four thousand.
Gotcha.
Before anything happens, can we ask Brian if we're following the proper order, or if we need to jump back onto that agenda item?
Sure.
All right, Brian, did you hear all of that?
I, I did hear that, um, thank you. You will need to reopen that agenda item and take the action under that, and I don't have a public comment.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, we're gonna jump back to item number thirty in today's agenda. Um, and with that, Lisa, I will let you say what you gotta say.
Yep, again, Lisa, myself for the record, just a quick correction on agenda item number thirty for the parcel that was listed as zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash two-seven for forty-four thousand, that should have been parcel zero-zero-two, zero-six-three dash two-zero.
All right, thank you. Brian, do we need to, uh, make another motion, or are we good?
Yeah, you will need to make a motion to let the record reflect the correction of the parcel number S just identified.
Gotcha. Gotcha, thank you.
And, uh, and Brian, in, in terms of that motion, do I just need to, um, reference the change, or should I go back? And make the motion with everything included, but with the proper, uh, the proper parcel number in there?
It would be most prudent to do it the second way, even though it's more works.
Very good.
All right, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am, uh, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve Story County to make a formal contingent offer. Offers, offers to property owners will be contingent on meeting all requirements of the LWCF. Program Conversion Requirements with an estimated timeframe of three hundred and sixty-five days to close. On the following parcel numbers and recommended amounts based on appraised, appraisal values and title and escrow fees as follows. Parcel zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash two-zero in the amount of forty-four thousand. Zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash two-two for twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash two-four for twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Zero-zero-three dash zero-six-three dash twenty-five for thirty-three thousand. Zero-zero-three dash zero, sorry, zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash twenty-six for twenty-six thousand five hundred. And zero-zero-two dash zero-six-three dash twenty-seven for twenty-six thousand five hundred. And title and escrow fees estimated at one thousand three hundred and forty dollars per parcel. In accordance with the appraisals completed on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five by Anthony Wren. To satisfy a land conversion issue related to Land and Water Conservation Fund or LWCF Grant. Received by the county in twenty sixteen in accordance with CFR thirty-six, chapter one, part thirty-nine, and the National Park Land Service and Water Conservation Fund. Utilized to replace park equipment at Miners Park with an estimated cost of a hundred and ninety-five thousand and forty dollars, which includes title and escrow fees.
Second, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That leaves us, item number thirty-eight, which is adjournment of all active and recess boards on this agenda, it is twelve-thirteen. This meeting is adjourned, we'll see you in a couple weeks.